First thing I want to acknowledge is that the mayor is actually online, zooming in from some secret place somewhere in the United States. Welcome, John.
Thank you.
Also, appreciate the fact that you like to have the seat up high, too. Madam Clark, can you read the notice?
Yes, thank you. Board of Commissioners' Public Meeting Agenda for Tuesday, July 15, 2025. The time is now 7:08. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975, notice that this meeting was published in November 21, 2024, issues of The Nutley Sun, The Herald News, and The Star Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board, and a copy is on file in the Municipal Clerk's Office. Commissioner Evans.
Here.
Commissioner Tucci.
Here.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Here.
Commissioner Petracca. Mayor Kelly.
Present.
There are no minutes or executive minutes tonight. Communications?
Thank you. The Van Riper House has submitted an event, an event and social fare permit application for a beer festival on September 6, 2025, between 2:00 PM and 6:00 PM at the Van Riper House on 491 River Road. Motion, please?
Move it. Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca. Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
Mayor, we have a proclamation tonight. Do you have any comment on it, or do you want me to read it?
It's in honor of Jean Sylvester, number of years of dedicated service to the township upon her retirement. We just wanted to do something to honor her dedication to the township. And so, without further ado, Deputy Mayor, if you want to read it.
Thank you. Whereas the Township of Nutley Board of Commissioners and the Nutley Public Library Board of Trustees wish to recognize the outstanding career in retirement of Jeannie Sylvester, who will retire August 1, 2025, after 24 years of dedicated service. And whereas Jeannie Sylvester received her professional librarian certificate from the State of New Jersey Department of Education on June 28, 2000, began her career at the Nutley Public Library on February 20, 2001. It was promoted to a supervisory role on June 2, 2007. Whereas during her tenure, Jeannie provided outstanding leadership and guidance to the circulation and interlibrary loan departments, earning respect of all of her colleagues and cultivating a spirit of collaboration, professionalism, and public service. Whereas Jeannie has been a driving force in bringing the enriching programs to the Nutley community, including adult lectures, concerts, and craft workshops, and has thoughtfully curated the library's adult fiction and media collections to serve readers of all interests. Whereas Jeannie played an integral role in planning and executing the Nutley Public Library's Centennial Celebration in 2014, helping to honor and showcase the library's rich history and its lasting impact on the community. Whereas Jeannie is a passionate advocate for literacy and lifelong learning, a valued member of several buckles committees, and a true believer in the mission of public libraries to educate, inspire, and connect with their communities. Whereas she has demonstrated extraordinary commitment to the Friends of the Library, generously donating proceeds from her handcrafted Julian crafts to support Nutley, support library initiatives, and dedicating personal time to volunteer causes. Whereas her excellence in librarianship was recognized when she was honored with the Librarian of the Year Award at the Golden Apple Awards in 2019 by the New York City Chapter of Romance Writers of America. As Jeannie's deep appreciation for the Nutley community and support of the library and his staff has been evident throughout her career, she has often expressed gratitude for working alongside a dedicated team of professionals and serving patrons who truly value their public library. Now therefore be proclaimed that the Township of Nutley Board of Commissioners and the Nutley Public Library Board of Trustees do hereby commend and congratulate Jeannie Sylvester for her 24 years of exemplary service to the library and the Nutley community, and extend their best wishes for a joyful and well-deserved retirement. Would anyone else like to make a comment on this? Okay.
Just wish her good luck, good health on her retirement. Thank her for 24 years of service to our community.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just like to say, great job, congratulations, and exactly, good health in your retirement.
Yes, just like to say, thank you for your years of service, and congratulations on your retirement.
And it's for me, as with all, congratulations and enjoy this next adventure. Let's move on to reports. I have a code enforcement report for the month of May for the Department of Revenue and Finance. Commissioner?
Yes, I have a shade report for the month of June, 2025.
Bills?
Thank you. Bill is for July 15, 2025. Public Affairs, $223,470.22. Revenue and Finance, $4,731,495.36. Public Safety, $128,572.05. Public Works, $128,976.38. Parks and Public Property, $243,079.71. Water and Sewer Utility, $392,052.84. Payroll Sheet as of July 3, 2025. Regular payroll total, $1,078,546.98. Overtime payroll total, $61,122.1. Total payroll, $1,139,668.99. For a grand total of $6,987,315.55.
Move the bills.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye, with the exception of item number 2500890, which I abstained on.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca. Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
And that's it for bills.
Thank you. We're going to have a need to step into executive, but before we do that, would anyone wish to comment on any of the agenda items? Only on agenda items? Lenny, do you need to read the notice?
Yes, we need a, I'm sorry.
Just the public comment on agenda items, do you need to read a notice for that? Okay, fine. Seeing no one, any Board of Commissioner announcements? Commissioner Tucci?
Not at this time.
On here, there.
Mayor? Any announcements?
Not for me at this time.
And none for me. At this time, we're going to need to go into an executive session of the board.
Yes, Deputy Mayor, we need to go into closed session.
Need a motion, please?
Move it.
Whereas Section 8 of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975, permits the exclusion of the public from meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas the public is of the opinion that such circumstances exist, and whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex and State of New Jersey desires to proceed to close executive session, and now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, move into closed executive session to discuss litigation. Be it further resolved that at the time when such discussion may be disclosed to the public, shall be when and such disclosure may be made without adversely affecting the Township of Nutley, pending indoor anticipated legal personnel contractual matters and other matters within the exceptions provided for by statute. This resolution shall take effect immediately. Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca. Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
The time is now 7:16.
Commissioner Evans.
Moving on to ordinance introductions. I have one tonight. Is, John, are you there?
I'm here.
Good, all right. Ordinance number 3593. Ordinance providing for a 25.4% matching of funds associated with a capital improvement grant for a playground suitable for special needs children in the township of Nutley, in the county of Essex, New Jersey, and making an appropriation of 137,000, therefore, from the capital improvement fund of the township. I move that this ordinance be passed to a second reading and advertised in the Nutley Sun together with a notice required by law and that further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners be held at its second reading on August 19, 2025, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
Next ordinance is 3596. Mr. Tucci, Commissioner Scarpelli.
Well, do the first one, I'll do the second one. Just, I'll do the first one, you do the second one. All right. This is ordinance number 3596. An ordinance to fix the salaries of certain officers and employees of the township Nutley County of Essex, state of New Jersey, effective January 1, 2025, be ordained by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley in the county of Essex, New Jersey as following and as listed. I move this ordinance to be passed to a second reading advertised in Nutley Sun together with notice required by law. That further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners be held at its second reading on August 19, 2025, I move the ordinance, second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
You sum up, Deputy Mayor?
You are.
All right, this is an ordinance to fix the salaries of certain officers and employees of the township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey, effective January 1, 2025. If I move that this ordinance be passed to a second reading and advertise in Nutley Sun together with the notice required by law that further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners be held at its second reading on August 19?
Yes.
2025. I move the ordinance, second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
We have reading, ordinances that are on for tonight for your second reading of public hearing. Mayor, you have 3591, do you want to do that one?
Could you read it, I don't have the, the document in front of me.
Sure, sure, this is 3591. An ordinance of the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, vacating a portion of Windsor Place. Move to open the public hearing.
Second.
Do we need to vote on that?
Only to close the public hearing.
Would anyone wishing to comment on this ordinance like to come to the podium?
Move to close the public hearing, second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
On behalf of the Board, move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to resolutions. I, I see that, Commissioner Scarpelli, you don't have any?
On the agenda, Deputy Mayor.
I don't have none, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
None, none, none.
My cell came.
I have, I have one, Deputy Mayor.
Important business tonight.
So, that's good, and Mayor, you don't have any tonight, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so Commissioner Tucci, would you like to read your one, your lonely one?
I would love to. It's an outstanding one, I might add. If I find it. Whereas, I have it here. Department of Parks and Public Property, determined due to unforeseen circumstances, families had to cancel participation in programs offered, and whereas the Department of Parks and Public Property has determined a need to refund families, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey, that the treasurer be and is hereby authorized to refund payments for recreation programs in the amounts listed below. For our neighbors at 373 Bloomfield Avenue, for Camp Nutley, for the year 2025, in the amount of $1,350, and also our neighbors at 104 Georg Avenue, for a football program same year, in the amount of $200, I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have five resolutions to get through, so, which are under my heading. Mayor, with your permission, I'll read the four ordinances, the four resolutions that are on behalf of the Board.
Have fun.
Thank you. So, first resolution be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey, that the treasurer is hereby authorized to refund overpayment of tax charges in the amount of $4,559.22 for blocks 7805 lot 22 and block 101 lot 15, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Okay.
Sorry, didn't realize it was on mute, aye.
Okay, the next resolutions are, all of them are being read on behalf of the entire Board. The first one, 88, 18825. It's a resolution designating PB Nutcliffe Master LLC as redeveloper of the redevelopment area covered by the Roche Southside Kingsland Street redevelopment plan. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley identified certain properties in the township designated as follows on the tax map of the township, blocks 2,000, lots 1, 4, and 5, block 2101, lot 1, to be considered for designation as a condemnation area in need of redevelopment pursuant to the redevelopment and housing of NJSA 48:12A-1. Whereas on March 18th, pursuant to the resolution 64, 6714, the Board of Commissioners requested the Township Planning Board to conduct a preliminary investigation to determine if a study area satisfied the criteria for designation as a condemnation area in need of redevelopment pursuant to NJSA 48:12A-5. Whereas Mazor Consulting prepared an investigation of the study area for the township dated February 5, 2014. On March 3, 2015, the Board of Commissioners determined that the redevelopment area constitutes and meets the criteria under the LRHL to be designated as a condemnation area in need of redevelopment, that the redevelopment area should be determined and declared a condemnation area in redevelopment, which determination, among other things... and declared a condemnation area in redevelopment, which determination, among other things, authorized that the township to exercise the power of eminent domain to acquire all or proportion of such redevelopment area, whereas the township and PB Nutcliffe Master LLC have entered into a settlement which requires, among other things, the adoption of the redevelopment area. We will, right, settlement, right? Whereas Ford Planning has prepared for the township a redevelopment plan dated June eighteenth, twenty twenty five, entitled Roche Southside Kingsland Street Redevelopment Plan, which provides development standards and uses for the redevelopment area. Whereas in July one, twenty twenty five, the Board of Commissioners held a public hearing and voted to adopt ordinance thirty five eighty nine, accepting and approving the Roche Southside Kingsland Street Redevelopment Plan, whereas the Board of Commissioners has reviewed the submissions and qualifications of PB Nutcliffe Master LLC and finds that PB Nutcliffe Master LLC possesses the necessary resources and experience to redevelop the, uh, the redevelopment area in accordance with the redevelopment plan. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, New Jersey, as follows. One, the foregoing recitals be and hereby are incorporated herein as if repeated at length. And two, PB Nutcliffe Master be and hereby de, is designated the redeveloper of the redevelopment area covered by the Southside Kingsland Street Redevelopment Plan, subject to the subsequent approval and execution of the redevelopment agreement with the township. And three, the township administration and township attorney be and hereby authorized to take any necessary and reasonable actions in furtherance of the same, so move.
Second.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
One eighty nine dash twenty five is a resolution authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement with PB Nutcliffe Master LLC covering the Roche Innovation Center, uh, redevelopment, uh, plan. John, uh, is it necessary that I read all of those recitals again? Okay. Okay.
Can move it as written.
Yeah, I think, I'm gonna, what I'm gonna do is, if it's okay, I'll read it, read the now therefore, and then in a moment, okay? So now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, uh, County of Essex, uh, New Jersey, as follows. The foregoing recitals be and hereby are incorporated herein as if repeated at length. The mayor and/or is, uh, designee, uh, and the township clerk be and, uh, hereby auth, are authorized to execute and attest, respectively, a redevelopment agreement with PB Nutcliffe, uh, Master LLC in a form acceptable to the council of the township. The township administration and township attorney be and hereby are authorized to take all necessary and reasonable actions to effectuate the same, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mr. Scarpelli. Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
Uh, one ninety, uh, twenty five is a resolution reauthorizing the execution of a global settlement agreement with PB Nutcliffe Master LLC. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley is currently engaged in multiple litigations with PB Nutcliffe, uh, Master LLC regarding the use in the development of the, on, the campus. Whereas, uh, whereas on or about June third, twenty twenty five, the township adopted a resolution authorizing the execution of the global settlement agreement with PB Nutcliffe Master in, in the same or similar form provided to the Board of Commissioners on or about June second, twenty twenty five. Whereas the parties have made modifications to the proposed form of the settlement agreement and desired for the avoidance of doubt to reauthorize the execution of the settlement agreement, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, New Jersey, as follows. One, the foregoing recitals be and hereby are incorporated herein as if repeated at length. The mayor or his designee and the township clerk be and hereby are authorized to execute a settlement agreement with PB Nutcliffe Master in a form and content acceptable to legal counsel for the township and the township administration and legal counsel be and hereby are authorized to take all necessary and reasonable actions to effectuate the same, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Uh, my, the last resolution. Thank you, John. Uh, I, I'm sorry. Resolution one ninety one dash twenty five. A resolution of the Board of Commissioners determining that the application documents submitted by PB Nutcliffe Master in regard to the property located at forty one dash forty seven, forty four dash fifty, and fifty four Windsor Place and identified as block one oh two, lot two, and block two hundred, lots one through six, and twenty four are consistent with the redevelopment plan and the township's master plan. Where, uh, whereas on or about July one, the Board of Commissioners, uh, twenty twenty five, the Board of Commissioners in the Township of Nutley adopted redevelopment plan entitled the Roche Innovation Center Redevelopment Plan Block One oh two, Lot two, Block two hundred, Lots one, two, three, four, five, six, and twenty four. And whereas pursuant to the plan, the redeveloper is required to submit and the township is required to review preliminary plans for the redevelopment project to evaluate whether said plans are consistent with the plan. Whereas on or about July ninth, twenty twenty five, PB Nutcliffe Master LLC, the applicant submitted the plans to the township and requested a determination that same are consistent with the development standards and conditions set forth in the plan. And whereas the submission consisted of the following. A letter from Merrill Gonchar Esq. dated July ninth, twenty twenty five, preliminary and final major site plan prepared by Colliers Engineering and Design. It, there's, there's, it's, that was dated, uh, November twenty second, twenty four, and revised through June twenty twenty five, consistent, consisting of forty eight sheets. I think that's part of it. It screwed up on here a little bit. I'll rewrite, I'll re, re, reread that so it's clear. The preliminary final major site plan prepared by Collier Engineering and the design dated November twenty second, twenty four, and revised through June twentieth, consisting of forty eight sheets. Too many bullets, right? To, the next, the traffic impact letter report prepared by Stonefield Engineering dated June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. Architectural plans prepared by Perkins and Will's, undated, consisting of seven sheets. Whereas by review memo dated July fifteenth, Paul Ricky, a, uh, Ricky planning, the township's planner, as well as a review memo dated July eighth, prepared by Ford Planning, the township's redevelopment planner, the township's professionals advised that the referenced application documents, uh, applicant's documents are consistent with the terms and conditions of the redevelopment plan and the township's master plan. Whereas the township Board of Commissioners has considered the matter and agrees with the findings of the township planners. Whereas the Board of Commissioner finds and determines that the application documents are consistent with the redevelopment plan and the township's master plan. Now therefore, therefore, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley that one, the township Board of Commissioners hereby finds and determines that the application documents submitted by the applicant are consistent with the redevelopment plan and the township's master plan. Two, the township's professionals and administrative staff be and hereby are authorized to take all reasonable and necessary actions to effectuate the same. This resolution takes effect immediately, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
There's no other business before the Board of Commissioners. We open it up for public comment.
Would you like me to?
Seeing no one, we don't need, there's no one, so seeing no one, we'll, we'll close the public comment period. Uh, we do have a need for, uh, another executive. John, for what?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, we do have a need to go into closed session, discuss litigation.
Motion.
Move it.
Second.
Thank you. Whereas Section Eight of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter two thirty one, Public Law nineteen seventy five permits the exclusion of the public for meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas the public bodies of the opinion that such circumstances exist, and whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley in the County of Essex and State of New Jersey desires to proceed to close executive session, and now therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley moved into closed executive session to discuss litigation. Be it further resolved that the time when such discussion may be disclosed to the public shall be when, and such disclosure may be made without adversely affecting the Township of Nutley, pending and or anticipated legal personnel contractual matters and other matters within the exception provided for by statute. This resolution shall take effect immediately. Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca. Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
There being that there's no other business, uh, to be conducted, we can, uh, move to close the meeting.
Move it. Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
And the time is now eight twenty seven.